Meeting to order at 7:04 PM on March 4th. Welcome everyone and thank you for being accommodating to reschedule the meeting. I know what Danny even mentioned, sometimes means more nights out for us too. You know, because we already have things kind of going on on certain weeks of the month. So it may mean a lot of nights out for people, so I appreciate that. And again, thank you for going to the Friends meeting last night.
Had a blast, thank you.
Great. Okay, so did everybody have the opportunity to look over the January minutes?
Yes.
Any changes that weren't noted to Beth?
I wasn't here, so I couldn't comment, except that I appreciated getting filled in.
Okay, excellent. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. And bills, I know Beth had sent some out to us for review, which is great. Yes?
Welcome Marty.
Yeah, well, on membership.
Well, then it's out of, it's out of order, because Marty really should be welcomed.
We should welcome everyone that's watching on TV.
Yes, yeah, we can, I was just about to, but if you think it's okay. So, welcome Marty.
Thank you very much.
He was appointed, was it in January?
Last, no.
It must have been the middle of February, that's right. And, yep, and Marty, if you'd like to just say a few words about yourself and why you're interested in joining the board?
Sure. I moved with my wife here to Grafton about a year and a half ago. Very pleased to learn that a new library had been voted to be built, or a new addition to be built. And we learned by just happenstance, having gone on the website, that you were looking for a trustee to fill someone else's position who had resigned. And I said to myself, that could be interesting, I might be able to do that. Then I made a point of finding out about it. I'm a retired lawyer, I've done various kinds of work, some of which with towns and cities. They have a rough idea of what goes on and some of the protocols involved. And I've done business work, my practice was in general business law. And I felt that this is something I could, I could be interested in doing and mostly hope to help make the new library a real success. So I applied and I was accepted and here I am and I am going to run for election in May. I don't know, happy to answer any questions you have, I don't know what else to say for a personal pitch about the whole thing.
No, that's great. So you and I were able to catch up offline a few weeks ago and I kind of gave you a sense of the different kind of subcommittees that we have and responsibilities that we have. Is there anything in particular, not putting you on the spot, but where you feel that you'd like to kind of hit the ground running? Or do you just kind of want to sit back and listen and absorb and learn the job and then kind of see where you might fit in?
I think I'd like to learn what's going on for us rather than, I appreciate the offer, it feels a little audacious to me to just jump in.
Sure.
Knowing what I'm talking about. I'd rather know what I'm talking about but sound like I don't.
Okay, well, thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so do we have two membership items on here? Yes, we do have old members, old business membership and membership. So, so membership, I think we should talk about, just that we have another, another open seat because Martina Arnton, we thank her for her service. She resigned a few weeks ago, so we have 30 days as the Board of Library trustees to appoint someone. Otherwise, they have to go before the Select Board and be appointed that way. I don't know that we've really been very, very quick, so I don't know if that's the exact process. To appoint somebody within 30 days, if we just say this is who we want and then we tell the town clerk and that's it. But certainly if anybody knows anybody who really loves the library and has some skills that would benefit the board, you know, please, please think about that.
I think Michelle Dalla had a couple recommendations, so I can ask her.
Okay.
I'll send her an email today.
Excellent, thank you.
So she's, she's resigned like, in fact immediately, right? She's not doing, okay, that's what I thought.
Yep. So we have the building, building program grant update. That's something that Beth usually handles, but Doug, is that something that?
I can give an update from what I know, I mean, we just had our meeting, yep.
Yeah, please.
So I think people know that the, you know, it's construction is, I shouldn't say it's on hold because it's still in progress, they're still doing some stuff in the building, the existing building, the existing attic. While they're waiting for the soil remediation and we just had our meeting just now. And essentially what we're waiting on is they've proposed, they put a proposal together to remove all of the soil and distribute it where it's supposed to go. And they're just working through those contracts. So Andy and the OPM are both working with the contractor to finalize those contracts. So that, that expects to take probably a week or so, it has to go in front of the Select Board. So we're probably still talking three weeks before that gets done and finalized. The, the total delay then would be about three months from when they've stopped. And they're expecting that essentially to start up right away once they get going again. And essentially the end date's going to be three months, probably about three months pushed out.
Really?
But the, but in the interim, I've, they are putting some of the systems in right.
They correct, they've been working on electrical and plumbing in the existing building. The other, what do you call, the, the mechanical space where the boiler is and stuff like that, they're working in there. So they're definitely doing some project work.
Yeah, I saw them.
The architects and we just met, we're looking at colors for the, you know, the brick, the colors of the building, the colors of the windows, the trim, the roof. The roof is going to be asphalt, but we're trying to match the colors of the slate. The architect's gone around and looked at all the different colors that are on the common and have proposed a couple colors. They've gone in front of the Historic District Commission and they've agreed to two of the color schemes. Ultimately, we don't have to choose that anytime real soon, I guess what Andy said is, at some point they'll put together, what did he call it? Like a template that will have like the bricks, the window trim, the colors, the ceiling, like a big wall that you can go and actually look at. It's kind of hard to write, you're only looking at this little chip. I think the two color schemes are, so interestingly, the architect has gone, looked at the existing windows and then he scraped the paint off to see what the colors have been over time.
How neat.
So most of the colors now are white, kind of a white color, but underneath it is more of a beige. So he's proposing more of a beige color for the new windows.
Oh, that's interesting. Oh, I like that.
And then the two colors for the, the trim, I mean, for the siding is like a gray, a pewter gray color and what was the name, something squash? What?
Hubbard's car squash?
That's it. Oh, very good.
I'm not that brilliant, I wish I was.
And, you know, those are just two of the schemes that they proposed and have gone in front of the Historic District Commission.
Wow, I think it's going to be beautiful.
Yep.
I'm so excited. She said copper for cutters and downspouse.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, it's really exciting. You open a window, you can see some of the, the pictures of the sides, but to the door.
It's going to be interesting with the interaction with the public as more of it, more goes on and as people are coming out of their caves, their winter caves.
Yeah.
You know, and starting to see things, I expect a lot more discussion and interest and hopefully happiness, you know, as they see it moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, it's been a challenge with the remediation of the soil. I mean, the soil itself was only moderately contaminated, right? So it's, it's not like they're having challenges figuring out where to go, everyone knows where it's going to go, it's going to three different locations. It's just a matter of working through that contract and the change order.
And there was a concern with finding a proper fill to replace the soil, making sure that there was a solid foundation too.
Yeah, we didn't discuss that, I don't think there's any, any issue once they've removed the, the soil.
Yeah.
About finding the proper fill.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause I, I thought, I think it was Andy that was mentioning it. Because if the foundation is not, you know, solid enough, you don't want to build a library on top of it. But I guess the other option is to just go down lower until you.
Well, that's what they're going to do, right? They're going to go down, I think they've already determined the depths of all the footings, that's already been determined.
So making a lot of progress.
Yeah, I think it's just really been, the, the general contractor has had to wait for a lot of the site work because they got to wait for that soil to be removed. And, and they were going to have to remove soil anyways, right, for the excavation? But this is just that, that special remediation.
And plus, wouldn't the winter months usually be very cold? I mean, this is highly unusual winter we had.
It's highly unusual, but, so I think that's why they think that three month delay is not going to push it any farther. Because those three months typically would have, you know, would have been less work than usual anyways because of the winter.
Right.
That was my thought, thank you. It's terrific.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, any other questions, I think that was about it.
That's good.
Oh, is, do you know if the webcams are up yet? If that's going to happen or?
It's going to happen, I mean, I know Andy's already arranged it, they're going to put a webcam up.
Oh, the webcam.
Yeah.
Up on the trailer. And, you know, it's only going to get exciting once they start excavating and building, so it's okay that it's not up yet, but that's, that's going to happen.
Okay, great.
I was going to ask Andy if he has any footage from today, because when I drove by, there was somebody up in the attic with a big crane, like a blue crane of some sort.
Oh, he sent a, he did send us an update for today with pictures, but I haven't looked at it yet.
Yeah, cause I think I would, I was going to see if I, if like, if we could start using those, if the Friends would, because I, I was doing stuff on the Friends Facebook page, so I'll ask them. You know, if they want us to help publicize it, because we want to make sure people know that it's happening.
Publicize the project itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there is that website, the Time is Now website, that Beth's been updating.
Yeah, and Beth and I both have a project going for this.
It's mostly just like schematics and stuff so far, but there's no reason why they couldn't, we couldn't put some pictures on there also.
I'm going to be doing a site on for her.
Okay.
Oh, nice.
Okay, great.
On Facebook, I think would be good too.
We do have it on the webpage, all the pictures so far are on the library webpage, if you go to the building, it's there, they're all there.
I just think it would be nice to be, for someone to get it in their newsfeed, a couple pictures, that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, do we have a, a budget to review? I don't know that I've seen that attachment.
You mean from Beth?
From Beth, yeah.
I didn't, I don't think we saw one, did we? We didn't send out a budget?
Well, she usually brings it, however, through the month, she set, she has set warrants. And that's how we're handling that now, is the warrants and then she prints out the budget. I don't know if she printed out the budget today, but she usually brings that for us to look at too. But the warrants, we, you got, should be looked at as she sends them, just so you know what she's spending.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So let's move on then.
The Capra campaign.
Dana, Capra campaign.
Okay. Good news is that we got, we have all our materials and it's, it's all been sent to be worked on, final design. So it took a while for Beth, Beth had to give me like the square footage for the upper and the lower floor, the lower floors. We were waiting a couple things, so I think, I think we got it all straight now as best we can. So I met with Doug, Doug and I had a conversation yesterday and we're, we're creating new lists, solicitation lists or potential donor lists. And we're going to, we're going to have a meeting with people next week, which are organizing that. There's a couple people said they wanted to join, so we're working on that, so full steam ahead. We were not, Beth had told me that the roof colors might change, but we just made the decision that we're going to go with what we have now because it's not, we have to continue going. And it sounds like it's going to be a whole different scheme. I mean, if they knew it tonight and they could tell me they could make everything ready like in another day or two, but.
Well, I think the roof has been decided, the roof color has been decided, but not the siding.
Yeah, and that will take a while, right?
Yep.
So we're going to, I think we're going to use what we have and then Doug is just, there's a couple issues we had with the schematics, they're fine. It's just that they didn't show the patio because it's not part of the finished product. It's not part of the building because it, it's not the scope of the project, which actually helps us. Because if we leave it that way, we're going to put like a little patio symbol and it's, patio is going to be written underneath the schematic. So when we talk to people, we're going to say, this is a perfect example, you know, one of the reasons why we're doing the fundraising is so that we can fund things outside of the scope of the project and that would be patio. So there's going to be like what they're calling an amphitheater, which is a children's round patio and then adults patio. I just say adults because it's general use. So, so anyway, we're good on that, so we're moving ahead and I would, you know, we're just, and this is a good time for us now and there's, there is stuff happening, so I'm pretty excited about it.
Yeah, I mean, we should have the brochure in two, two weeks, right, three weeks?
We're going to start making appointments, go out and see people and it's good that things are progressing, we're having no issues. So remediation was like not really that difficult, so we're in good, we're in a good shape. So we've, we're really glad about that. And I had a nice meeting when I, when I, I did meet with some of the Friends last night and we discussed that. And I told them we'd be looking for their help and some of those people we'll be meeting with. There are people that gave us pledges for over three year period and some of them have given like half of it, so now we'll go back for the other half. So we're in good shape, we can't wait to get this going and rolling. So I think in the long run, it's good that we had this little downtime because now we have what we need. And they're on any, and it's, it's going, you know, it's not, there's not a lot of questions. So, yeah. So if you know anybody that wants to help with fundraising and if we find any, any leads that we think you might help us with, we'll be, we'll reach out to you. So Doug and I are working on that with other people. And I also was investigating, I was investigating, well, I won't go into that, I'm investigating something else. And I, if it works out, I'm going to try to see if there's any grants around that I might, we might be to you, do, be able to apply for. But, you know, might as well try to go after whatever we can, kind of deal, and Beth's going to help me with that as far as getting me in the right direction.
Nice, okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Did we find out if we can put one of those little fundraising thermometers in the library?
I don't think that's ever been brought, but that's a great idea.
Okay.
Well, we said we were going to make a banner, is that what you mean?
Yeah, something, just something in the, I mean, I know we're.
Yeah, there's a banner that has, remember I sent you that one?
No, I know, but would that go at the library or at the site?
At the site.
Oh, it would go at the library.
But I think you'd also want something.
I've seen them at the libraries.
Outside?
Inside. Well, oh, that's true, but we could put, we can talk about that.
Yeah. I was thinking of a big one on the site, but something at the library.
Did you like what I sent you?
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah.
I think it should be on the site because, you know how the, the park, the bridge park? All the time you pass that and you would think about, I'm going to go donate money.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
No, I think you're right, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, I just thought two places. I was just thinking it looked great in Northborough, but we, our library is, but I think it would be good for people when they go into the, our current situation, because that's not our permanent place.
Even just to raise awareness.
Yeah, just to raise awareness, we do have people using the library, so we are, we're working on that too. So, we should have more to report next month and then the next month after that.
Good job.
I'm really excited about it.
I just sent you roof tile pictures. And siding options.
We're really getting excited over here.
They're looking at rugs next door.
Oh my gosh, that's great. Are you sure, did you get to do what you needed to do in there?
I think so.
Oh, it's not secret.
Because you should be part of that, that's the fun stuff.
Nothing's fine.
That's great, I'm really excited about it.
Okay, any other questions for Dana?
Thank you so much for all your work on it.
And I wanted to say, Beth, I went to the Friends and I had a great meeting there and I was saying that I felt like the group was really dynamic, I enjoyed being there and that. There's a lot of give and take and they have a lot, they have new members and they're doing, they're really working hard. I think we're going to be really well positioned, I think in the next year and a half, we're sort of just going to go up like that. And I think we'll get a lot more, we'll get more help in that, we'll get people that want to join the group, they're really active. They have so many great ideas and I did bring them an idea, because years ago, we had that, we had that golf, we hired a group, there was a group that you could.
That was so great.
Do the golf, the golf outing.
In the library.
Well, I was over at Millbury and they're doing it, so I brought that flyer to Stacy and she was looking at that. So we're talking about, Beth remembers, we talked about having it in the, where we are currently, our temporary location and then in the library. So I, I was really excited, so the Easter, the egg hunt's going to be incredible, they're doing three.
Are we doing Friends now?
So, so let's jump, let's jump to, let's jump to the Friends update, thank you for attending, Beth is going to take some notes.
I wanted to say something positive about them, because I know how hard they work.
Yeah, so they have some really great, great members, right?
They have great members.
A lot of good energy.
The egg hunt is going to be great, it's going to be, I think I wrote it down, it, there's a lot of energy and they're going to have like three egg hunts, three sessions instead of just two. And I think they're going to have like, if I understood it, they're going to have 10 eggs, so they're increasing them, it's going to be $8. And you could buy it through PayPal and it's going to be, they said they're going to have to, they'll have like 30,000 eggs, I think, or something. 10 times 300, is that?
Yeah, like 29 gross.
29 gross. And then, my kids helped last year and I think Michelle was in charge of that, so we'll help again, we had a blast, so I think Michelle's going to do that.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Michelle too, because.
It's April 11th.
That's when they're.
That's the hunt.
That's the hunt. And then they have the community read coming up, which is March 23rd, they're excited about that. And that's about, what is the book, Memory?
Remember the Ladies.
Remember the Ladies, I have the book. It was weird, it was a really great meeting, I, oh, and they've been working, they've been getting, they get, they go to, they're going, they do an outreach to all the different supermarkets to get mon, to get money so they can buy the candy. So they've been doing well with that and Ellen's very aggressive with that, it's great. She got some new, she got some new, I think she got Market, Market 32. And then she has different other markets she goes to and she knows what she wants from them and she asks them, so I thought was great. And so they, I guess they can have 300 kids and they said they're usually three, ages three to six, although I know older kids will go to get the, the egg, the gold eggs. Anyway, so it was a great meeting. I'm trying to think of this, and they said we should all be getting, and they said that there's a newsletter online and they've been doing everything online. I guess now, it's now when they send your notice, you can, you can, you can renew online. So I think that's going to be really good and they said they have.
Renew online.
Yeah, they have like 75 members.
But that's just through the Grafton Library website and it's on PayPal, I think, did I do PayPal?
They have their own website, friendsGPL.org and right at the, there's a big donate button and you go there, I think it's friendsGPL.org/join. And you can either make a donation or renew or depending on what the fundraiser is.
And in the month of March, they're doing this thing down at Stop and Shop where it's a, you can buy a bag, I think it's like $2.50. And it's a shop, it's going to have the Friends logo on it and then you can use it to shop. No, not the Friends logo?
It just says give.
Oh, it just says give?
Yeah.
Okay, it says give and then there's a sign about the Friends somewhere, is that what you were talking about?
After I bring it to them.
Oh, okay.
They're really, they have a whole board with the display and it says who their featured charity of the month is. So the idea is you buy a reusable bag, but then because a charity changes every month, every time you go with your reusable bag, you can scan the tag that's on your bag and it will donate a dollar to whatever that charity is for the month. So March is, you know, just at the beginning, so you buy it now and then every time you go shopping, you can scan it and give another dollar if you want. And next month, it'll be a different organization.
Yeah, and they get a good amount of that and they're also going to do, they're going to do it once a month, they're going to have a different restaurant and I guess they're going to see if they can start with Pepperoni Express in a couple months. So they really act, they want to do one once a month, which I thought's a great idea. So I was really, it was really a fun meeting, I'm glad I went, I encourage other trustees to go, because you get to know people.
Yeah.
It's.
So for Marty's sake, as to kind of solidify our relationship with the Friends group, we're also members of the Friends group too. So we have, all have annual memberships, either individual, I think is $10 and then as a family is $25. So I encourage you to sign up for, for a membership too, to support them.
I noted the website.
Excellent.
And I don't know, is there an age limit on the Easter egg hunt?
There isn't, no.
They just said that's the group that seems to do the best.
Yeah.
Because then they, they're, you know, they can walk and get the eggs and stuff. But no, I, I think.
They kind of age out and end up volunteering because they're in scout troops.
Yeah. I mean, I think kids go up to sixth or seventh grade.
Okay.
I mean, my kids last year helped, my son was, is in sixth grade and they had a blast.
They're really, and they're really making a big event out of it this year, they're going to have lawn games, they're going to have a balloon artist, they were trying to get food trucks.
They're going to have face painting, they're going to get girls, we suggested that they could probably get some teenage girls to help with the face painting. And it's going to be down at the Riverview Park, is that what you call it?
Ferry Street.
Oh, Ferry Street. Ferry Street.
Oh, it's not at, it's not at the Conlon.
No, Ferry Street, okay, so that's, is that where Riverview Apartments are?
No.
No, it's a.
Oh, so I didn't know, I don't know where that is then.
It's South Griffin near.
It's like the ballparks, the Ferry Street ballpark.
Okay, all right, I do, for some reason I thought it was the other place.
Yeah, there's a parade, the, the big parade ends there, the Friends had a booth one year, they were giving out.
Oh, that's not Ferry, that's um.
Ferry Street Park is the new park of, of the last few years where the old bank is, correct?
No, that's the Mill Street.
Yeah, that's Mill Street.
So they're going to actually have it on the ball fields?
They're, yeah, yeah.
That's where the Little League usually does it.
Yeah.
I, for some reason, I thought it was in that other location, so I'm glad you clarified that.
There's a lot, we have a lot of parks.
So there'll be plenty of parking, it's perfect.
Yeah.
There's a lot of parking.
Big lot.
And people, I think people know where that is too. And that, that'll be fun, so I'm looking forward to it. And that's April 11th, we said. And the tickets are going to go on sale fairly soon.
Saturday, March 28th, I forget if it's 9:00 or 10:00 AM, but Friends are working on a press release and, you know, we'll share whatever they make available. Get it on our calendar soon.
And there'll be a lot of, there'll be extra tickets this year.
We hope, yeah, we saw that.
We hope, it's been sold out.
So I need to volunteer to go to the next Friends meeting and Dana went to the last one and I went to the one before that and I know you went to the one before that too. And we thought Marty might be a good candidate.
Welcome Marty.
I've been volunteered. When is it?
It's usually the first Tuesday.
Oh, they said it was going to be the, the 7th or the 14th, but it sounded like the 7th to me.
Of April.
Yes.
Not, no, it's not, it's really not good because the 8th is Passover. We'll be preparing.
Oh, right.
In our house.
Okay.
I mean, otherwise, I'd be happy to do it, but.
Sure.
My service is going to be required.
Yeah, so, so maybe we'll just stay in touch about it, but maybe.
Until the next month, I mean, I just, this would not be a good, a good one.
I think it's a good opportunity for, for them to get to know the new trustee as well.
I'm happy to, but this is just not a domestically smart thing to do.
Very good.
I, I wish, but with my new, my new business, I never know what my evening will be.
I might, I should be able to make that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially if it's the 7th.
Perhaps, Doug.
They said it was going to, they, they were leaning towards that.
They were leaning to the first Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, let me know if it doesn't work out, Doug. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dana. So we're going to go back to a couple items. We'll just work backwards, so the IT, IT update?
I have no IT update.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I do, we, we password protected the children's and the teen tween computers. So now anyone who wants to use a computer in the library has to sign up. Sorry, adults have always had to, but they're unlocked. Teens and children have not had to, but now they are locked and they have to get the password. So far, no glitches.
Teens and children?
Teens and children, teens, tweens and children, so zero to 18. Yeah, and it's, it's in part to deter adults from walking into teen space and just hopping on the computer, because we had some issues. We had a computer, the IT department, company did, reset a couple profiles, like wiped them and, and reset them because we're having an issue with like things and not logging on and all kinds of weird things going on. So they've just been real, they continue to be responsive to whatever issue we have, we have printer jobs that get stuck. That we weren't able to clear.
Do they have remote access to?
They do, yeah, yeah, so we're not always waiting.
That's good.
They come every Wednesday to the town and as long as I get a request in Monday, Tuesday morning, Monday and Tuesday morning, they'll come. Otherwise, yeah, we can remote and I'm savvy enough to be on the phone and figure it out with them most of the time.
So there was a, there was a complaint about the adult computers not being fast enough.
Yes, there was.
Is that, is that still, is that founded or not, or unfounded?
I don't, I, I sit down and use them sometimes.
Yeah.
I don't have any issues with them.
Those are pretty new, aren't they?
They're not, they, we bought them in 2013, so, and we tried to do a three to five year replacement. But with a new building coming, I'm waiting, I don't, I don't want to.
Very wise.
I didn't budget anything for replacement computers except for myself, which I still haven't bought.
Well, as opposed to.
I don't have the time to do the research, I just, I just don't.
I think.
It's ridiculous.
Aaron was going to do it, right? Let Aaron do it.
So.
He was going to get Beth a computer.
Well, no.
She doesn't have time to do the research, so we have to help you, Beth. Yeah, you should have that.
We'll take that offline.
We'll figure it, figure it out.
But really, as it compares with some of the other computers in the building, so people wanting to have preference to other computers in the building. So like, I'd like to know if that's founded or not, if we, if we need to replace computers, so is it something that IT could look at? I'd like to know if that's founded or not, if we, if we need to replace computers. So is it something that IT could look at?
Sure, yeah, I, I guess. I mean, what, they're gonna time how fast the browser opens. And the, the teen computer, the teen laptops are brand new. We've never had teen computers before. And honestly, the adult in question who complained about it wouldn't have known they were faster.
Yeah.
Had they not been in the teen space on the teen computer.
Yeah.
But all it does is launch the browser faster. The internet, the, the response time is the same. The internet is not any faster.
So, I'm guessing that the adult computers probably have, um, older hard drives and maybe not fast SSDs like, like the new laptops do. Um, so that they're perceived to run faster.
And they're all in ones. So I don't know that we can replace individual components. It's, it's a, the whole thing monitor, it's all in one.
Yeah, yeah, you can.
You can, but.
Those can, those can't be twenty thirteen.
Are you offering to take on this project?
Aaron. I don't think that I can.
Difficult.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we're not, we have a year and a half.
The other thing is, um, so in the past, I've had reported a thou- a thousand people using computers, and that's counting every wireless session. And every person who's come in and sat down at the machine, um.
And they're also underreported because.
They don't always sign up.
From six to nine, I could see six people come in there and nobody signed.
So then staff would need to go over and, yeah, and try and get them to sign up.
But usually when I say six, I put a plus.
Yeah, so, so in this, so this month, um, I counted, I, I counted three hundred and ninety-one. And one of the reasons it's slower, I think, is we extended the time for the internet wireless. So it's not timing out every hour. And counting it as a new session if it's the same person. So we're trying to be, to be more accurate. Um, but I would say use is down. People are more likely to come in on their tablet, their laptop, and their smartphone. Than to hop on those computers. So use of the, the public library internet computers is down. So.
Does that?
Not that we know how to stop providing it, but.
I think it, I think it varies. I mean, I've been at the Shrewsbury Library, and they're all used. I was amazed.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen the same thing.
I think we need a better way of tracking how many people are getting on the computer.
So the plan is that in the new building, we will go to a software solution. If you wanna do that earlier, I can provide pricing. I do have a quote.
But if you're, do you understand what we're logging on?
But that would, that means that no, no staff intervene. You sign in with your library card, and if you don't have one, you ask for a staff member to give you a temp card, but then you get a, a report that spit out for how many different users and how long, not where they went, but just how many people and how long.
But if, if there's a password for them to get on, you should be able to log how many times they're, someone's logging on.
I don't know how to do it.
I've been in, in other libraries where they do that. It's not a pain. You kinda get used to it.
Yeah, I mean, now in the children's room, yeah, we have a, a log. But it's staff intervi- you know, staff intervene.
But it sounds like an issue that's going to be solved with the new building.
It will.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we have a lot to focus on.
Well, and as Aaron said, there, we can look at, there might be some small upgrades you can do that will improve the performance at a relatively low cost.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I, I can submit that as a ticket and see if Kaufman will take it on to evaluate and give a suggestion. To upgrade, what did you say that?
Uh, the hard drive.
The hard drive?
Yeah.
And you said another.
And a card and a S.
A card.
Well, SSD is just a faster drive.
And a what, please? SSD.
A solid state drive.
Oh, okay. And I think they, everything is on, um, what's the one that just became obsolete?
Windows seven, yeah.
Yeah, so we all, I, I think that everything is on Windows ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, they did that for us.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have to, um, replace all the computers, and they can be upgraded, um.
Yeah. I think they work, and they're, they're not, I mean, they're not terrible. They might not be as quick as a brand new machine, but they're perfectly adequate. Yeah.
Yeah.
Now I'm grumpy.
Yeah, I know, me too. I have no patience. And, you know, I'll run in and just print something out, and hurry and walk in, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, do you have a budget review?
Um, I do not have a budget review. I have a budget update for FY twenty-one, but for current budget, no, I don't have a printout.
Okay. Um, what's the budget update for twenty twenty-one?
Um, I was asked to reduce s- the cost of staff. Um, because of shortfalls for the whole town.
Yeah.
Um, and rather than letting, I put in a three percent raise for all of my staff because we, we were allowed at one point to do one point five to two plus a one percent merit. Um, so I asked if it had to come from, so I reduced everybody to two percent except for one employee whose job title and duties have changed a lot. Um, so I reduced everybody down to two percent and still didn't make the, the cut that they wanted me to make. So I asked if I could look at other areas, because one thing that happened is when I reduced personnel line, then I have to adjust the book budget. Remember, because we're required to spend fifteen percent on educational materials. Um, so I decreased programming, um, the book budget and personnel to cut fifteen thousand dollars from the library budget. So should we have an override, I think that would be restored. But if not, it's something you, that we can live with. Um, but it's not great for morale for people who, e- even though I've been fighting for more money for them, you know, there's, it's, they're still underpaid. Yeah. Yeah, but I didn't have to lose any people. Um, and I did ask, it's, it's a hard thing to do, again, facing an override, but I did ask for two new positions to start three quarters of the way through the budget cycle, assuming that we open the new library in April, May, or June, before the new fiscal year starts, right? So, so I do still have those, did still retain those positions. A full-time custodian at thirty-five hours a week.
Yeah.
At custodial salary comparable to union salary here at the municipal center. Um, and an additional twenty-hour, um, circulation person because of the additional desks that we have in the new building. So those stayed.
Is there a date set up when you're going in front of the finance?
Yes, I had, I don't know if you had remembered, but they usually have us on a Saturday, and I requested that we not do it on a Saturday. Um, and they honored that request. But their, their meeting is Wednesday, the night of our next trustee meeting. Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. Twenty-fifth. Um, and I said, that's fine, could we go at seven? So that we can go to your meeting for fifteen or twenty minutes and then come have our meeting. And they said, no, someone else is going at seven. So we are scheduled for eight o'clock on Wednesday, March.
Let me just do a quick.
Twenty-fifth, so we'll have a short meeting, and then adjourn and touch to FinCom, and we can always come back here, cause we'll have the room. If we have anything else to talk about.
That'd be good, cause then we can all go, which is wonderful.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I think that'll work.
Yeah, so and, and.
And we'll talk with.
We'll, we'll move quickly.
Yeah. Yeah, so I hope it's not a, it is an inconvenience, and I appreciate your flexibility for meeting on a weeknight instead of Saturday for me.
Just, could I just get a little clarification? This is a meeting of what for?
So, uh, the finance committee is having hearings. So they're asking every department who submits a, a budget to come and sit down in front of them and walk them through the budget. What did we reduce? What did we add? They'll ask questions like, you, what, what do you actually spend on in this line item? Do you really need that much money? And, um, yeah, and, and they also sometimes look for way like, um, can you, can you join with another department to, to spend money together on paper or, or whatever? Um, so they're looking for cost savings across the whole budget too. Um, and we usually get what we ask for. I'd say pretty much, we almost always get what we ask for. Um, but I'm going in, so I, I had a proposal. I was asked to reduce it. The town administrator approved what I reduced, and now FinCom is reviewing it. So somebody at FinCom could say, no, you can't, you, you can't take fifteen thousand dollars in the library budget. They need thirty thousand dollars more. Or they might say, you could reduce more. You can reduce more. We think that your project is not gonna open in April or May. So don't hire until July. Wait till the next fiscal year. So they, and they make a recommendation back. And then the budget gets voted on at town meeting. And this year, we're also asking for, um, finance committee to consider reducing a contribution that we make to the town budget. Uh, which is that we take money for overdue fines. And we turn over around six or seven thousand dollars to the town every year, and we'd like to not do that anymore. So we have to sort of make that request, and they have to approve it and, yeah. Right?
Wait, say that again.
Do they have to prove it? I think they have to prove. I thi- this is the meeting where we're asking for a fine-free library.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will trustees be presenting with you, or you present alone?
Yeah, you, well, I usually do most of the talking.
Yeah, she's so good.
I am.
Yes. Everyone kinda sits there and rightly cheers me on, but it would certainly be a help if you wanted to do the talking for that piece.
I know Aaron's been doing research on that. Martina was for that.
So, um.
And we have a history of asking for it and it not going anywhere.
So, so we can, we can jump, jump to that, that piece too, because that, that was my question as well. So I, I finished a letter, um, based on statistics that, that Beth has given, um, from, from our library on, um, blocked card stats, and because either people haven't, um, have too many overdue fines, or they haven't returned something. Um, and it was, it was quite shocking, I think, when we put the numbers together. So, but it was very interesting to, to s- to see, you know, uh, what it looks like from our town. Um, I, I've attended a few webinars and, and read some articles and, and whatnot. And, um, about libraries that have, um, gone fine-free, and very large libraries. Um, Boston Public Library is, um, fine-free under eighteen. And, uh, Chicago, uh, Public Library, that has like a hundred and twenty-one branches, completely fine-free. It's, it's really amazing. And so, uh, what they're finding is, um, that the reason that people generally don't wanna return something is because they don't wanna have another bill. And a free public library is, um, you know, i- it, it's not free if, if you're gonna be billed for returning something that you have at your home. And eventually, you just, you just were a little late to return it. So, so what they were finding is a lot of, um, when, once these, these large libraries went fine-free, they were finding that people were returning stuff that they had, that they just didn't wanna pay for, right? So, so re- re- really, wha- what is this about? Is it, you know, trying to make re- revenue for, for the town, or is it just getting the stuff returned to us that people have checked out? I think it's getting the stuff back that people have checked out. It is really the priority, because when you, when you actually look at the numbers, um, you know, that, that Beth helped, helped, helped work out. Um, the, the, the return on investment, yeah, the, the net is, is very small in terms of what it, what it costs. Um, um, you know, the, the town to, to manage. Yeah, so, so I have that in a neat little table in, in the letter, and happy to share with anybody who'd like to give some feedback. Um, it's still in draft format.
When it's, when it's final, can I have it for the record?
Yes.
Will you present that?
Um, I.
I think it might be interesting here. I mean, for me, it was interesting to hear about the public library and the Chicago library.
Yes.
So Robbins Library in Arlington has been fine-free for a year.
But I mean, these are huge libraries that are functioning well without, well, fines. That means it must be, it must be working, I would think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Um, i- it's more a question of approach, right?
Okay.
Do we, do we show up with the letter and say, hey, we wanna be fine-free with the grand opening of the library, like at the FinCom meeting? I don't think so. I think they should be sent a letter. The way I addressed it is, you know, to, to Grafton leaders. I know that Tim wanted to see it as well. Um, so I'm wondering who this letter should go to, maybe, um, most town departments. But I know it's really up to, to, to FinCom.
Okay.
Right?
Are the, are the town, are other town departments gonna care? Well, I mean, FinCom would and.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other, I just, I didn't mean that you had a, you know, preach to them, but I just thought, like, that you had really interesting facts.
Yeah.
Like I, I mean, look how big the Chicago library system is, and our Boston is, you know, down the road.
Yeah.
And that's working, so I, it works. They wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't successful.
Yeah, and, and what was really neat, also, I'll add, and you can read this in the letter, um, in Salt Lake City, um, as soon as they went to find free, they had, um, five percent, um, of cardholders just start coming back to the library. Pe- people that already had, and they, and three and a half percent of new cardholders, right? So, and that's just going fine-free. We're gonna have a new building, and there's gonna be a lot of energy and excitement over that new building and to, to open as a fine-free library. I mean, I, I think we'll, we'll beat those numbers.
Yeah.
And that's what we really want. We want people to go to the, the library. I mean, they, they're paying for it, and we'd like them to use it. So, um.
It's not articulate to me.
Yeah. So, we agree it should go to FinCom ahead of time, so that they're not blindsided. Um, and, and Tim would like to see it too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, what about the, the Board of Select, uh, Select Board?
Do they have anything to do with this, or would it just be more of an FYI, or?
We have a lot of supporters.
Yeah.
I don't. Yeah, I think the Select Board would be good, cause they represent, they represent the community, right? They represent everybody.
Yeah. I think it's, um, I think it's state law that fine money collected by the public library goes to the, um, the municipality.
Yeah.
So it's not like a town by law that they would have written, or that needs to be changed.
Yeah.
But it's, uh, isn't it, is it the purview of this group to say yes or no to that, or is it, uh?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, what would the downside be to communicating with them?
I don't see any. At least those three groups.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Um, so I, I sent it over to Beth. Uh, I just wanted, I know you're very busy, but certainly, um, you know, I'd love your feedback. And I can send it to anybody else who'd, who'd like me to send it.
Is the, is the library staff and you supportive of that?
Yes, I've, I've been asking since I started to consider, um, eliminating overdue fines. I, it creates a barrier. Um, but it, it's also time. I mean, we started tracking just with a tick mark, like every, cause what happens is someone gives you their card, their account comes up, and it shows in red if they have a fine. And even with, we're doing food for fines, and you can carry a balance of ten dollars before the card is stopped. We alert patrons. Just so you know, your account has a balance, thirty cents. You don't have to pay it right now. You can wait and do food for fines and bring in equivalent donation. Or you can pay it, or you can wait until it's, it's, it's a certain amount of money. You can still check out. But we just want you to know. So now, if they decide to carry that balance, every single time they come in, someone has that same conversation with them, cause we don't have, like, we're not gonna put a note on every single card to say, have the conversation. Plus, the fine could change, you know, in a week. They could have ten things overdue, and now they're at the limit. But that's, it's time, so we're, you know, and so, so now for the, for the first year, doing fine for, oh, don't worry, you do have a balance, but don't worry about it. We don't have fines anymore, so you can make a donation instead if you'd like.
Yeah, so, so that, that's the other piece I didn't really include in the letter, is like how we're gonna do it. Um, and I didn't know if I wanted to put examples of how we're gonna do it i- in the letter, um, because then people can, you know, feel like they're gonna poo it. And say, no, I don't agree with that. But it's really, we really want support of this initiative, and then let us set the policy.
Yeah.
I think the way you did it makes sense. I mean, I wasn't for it when we first talked about it, but I am now. I can see the merit. Cause I wondered, how long does it take to collect the fees? It's terrible.
So, if you're not, if you're not, if you're not convinced.
I am convinced.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you one more piece. You ready? Twenty-five percent of juvenile cardholders, that's under thirteen?
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent cannot check anything out at the library.
That's at our library right now, because their card is blocked because of fines.
Yeah.
So what happens is.
Pay my kids' fines.
Well, or, you know, you have two kids, and you have a card, and your card's in good standing. I know what it is, Dana. So now, Henry doesn't have to check out his book on his card that's blocked, cause mom can do it for him.
Yeah.
So they, they just, but then if he comes to the library on a school visit, or he comes after school, he's almost big enough now, right? He can't use his own card. And we can't check out on her card.
Oh, no.
She's not here with him.
And it's still flag him if they never return it. After some period of time, we're gonna know that they didn't return it.
We bill.
And we bill them for it.
Yeah.
So, it's not like you're gonna lose the con.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm really for it.
So, so the one thing that, that, that I'd like, um, y- your, both your opinion on is, um, do you feel that people uh, don't wanna return something, that they're just keeping it at home because they know they owe money on it?
Yeah.
It's human nature.
I'm not really sure, but.
Yeah. Because, because, because we, things do come back for food for fines.
Yeah.
Um, or if we offer an amnesty day. Uh, and there, there's just this shame.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's really hard to.
And I wasn't sure how, how to, how to write that in the letter, and that's why, where I might need a little bit of feed, feedback for. But it's like, you know, the librarians are, um, you better pay your fine, you know, or we're not gonna let you check out anymore. But, but that's, but that's the perception as it's been for years, you know.
Yeah.
We always say it nicely, and.
Yeah, or, yeah, we, we have a program, teenagers can work it off. You know, if you lose a book, we accept. You can purchase the exact copies in new condition somewhere else, because sometimes our, our fee with the book is, like, we're charging cover price. But if they can buy it forty percent off somewhere else, they can do that. So we are really flexible and lenient. So we are really flexible and lenient.
So so with with Chicago, they um with a hundred and twenty-two branches, their fines were about seven million dollars. That that was a hard sell for the city to say that we're not gonna bring in seven million dollars in fines anymore.
Are you serious?
I I will say, we um we waived three hundred and thirty dollars for food for fines in um November and December. We waived um a little more, a little bit more in the summer. It was like four hundred and forty-five dollars, I think. But those aren't huge amounts of money. Um the Food Bank just posted, they're looking for cash donations, cause they have twenty-three new families and a huge need. I would say food for fines are around.
I really like that idea.
What's the annual fines that are accrued by our library?
About seven thousand dollars.
And the un- un- the portion of unpaid of that seven thousand?
Um so a- about seven hundred dollars with four months of fine free in summer. We we waived about seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars this past year.
We charge seven thousand per year. How much of that just doesn't get paid?
A lot more of that.
That's just the money we make.
That's the money we make.
People actually being honest and paying us.
That's meme.
But we know, we know who, I mean, I don't know how the computer works. But if something runs past the due date and it's not in, does it automatically start showing? So we would.
It's still caps. It caps, so for every, it's like a three dollar cap per item. It might be a ten dollar cap for the movie. And then you also will get billed for the item after, I think, thirty days overdue.
But we know how much is currently due. We don't know that number, but we could get that number. But it's at least another seven.
Is it important to go in the letter, you think?
I'm just trying to figure out whether there's a percentage of the budget i- in its entirety. I mean, if it shows up that this is like one tenth of one percent of the budget, it kinda looks, it looks small, which it may be. I don't know. I mean, I like the idea of it. Uh Aaron and I happened to talk about it in some detail a few days ago. And I particularly am upset by the, you know, children not being able to take out more books. Children should want to be able to want to read or be able to read. It's a good habit, a good habit and a good hobby. But I guess the only downside is. What's to encourage people to obey the rules?
But doesn't it, don't we all autoc- also get automatic renewals? I've started getting that.
We have an automatic renewal.
But I think what Aaron said is, it actually, the experiences of the other libraries is they, that it's not that people don't ever return it, they're actually returning it quicker.
Yeah. Generally, people have a ver- um, you know, people are very busy. The last thing in their mind is, oh, when is that library item due? Oh, it's it's a, it's a day late, you know, so that's the kinda thing like if if we show that, you know, we trust them to return things. Actually, things are coming back more often and, you know, that that's that's what research has 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 shown.
Even without accruing fines, that card would eventually get eventually get blocked and you wouldn't be able to use it anymore, including to check out a museum pass. To access a database, to access ebook, so it's not just you can't walk in and check out a book. You get blocked from all of the services. So you would check it out for three weeks. No one's waiting. You get an automatic three-week renewal. At week seven, you're gonna get an overdue notice and fines start accruing. Um and then I think, and two weeks go by, you get an another reminder and in thirty days, you just get a bill for the book. And you either have to bring the item back, or you have to keep the item and pay for it, or you just never can use anything related to the library again with that card. So so there's, there's a stopgap. You can't just keep taking things out and and basically hoarding them.
Yeah, so we'll we'll still bill for for lost items, um but if they bring them back, it's.
And if they pay for it, we replace the item. Yeah, or buy something newer if it's an older book.
And and librarians are very nice and they are very helpful to patrons who are at ten dollars. Maybe they're at fourteen dollars and they're a teenager. We are helpful. We do let them check out books.
So.
And we do have patrons who, huh?
Not if they're over.
And patrons who um. And patrons who will argue with you. I mean, is it worth the argument? I mean, so you try to be nice, you try to be helpful and they will badger you. And it's a waste of our time and their time.
Yeah, and it's uncomfortable for the patron and for the librarian.
Well, it's very uncomfortable for the librarian, cause we are always trying to be open-handed and helpful.
Yeah, and say yes.
And say yes.
Yeah, but when you have, someone has ten dollars and fifty cents, they'll say, give me sixty cents and you can take out this book. I just need sixty cents to get it under ten. Yeah, we can't make all the accommodations we can all the time.
And we thank you for upholding that policy, even though it can be difficult.
So you're proposing that we would go find free with the opening of the new library or beforehand?
Um I would say just as for the grand opening of the library. More grand that way. All right, well, thank you uh for hopping around in the agenda. But that was my question too, like when, so we should give the letter to the um to the FinCon before. And I'm happy to present on that.
Landscape Garden.
Uh any updates for the landscaping garden? I know my allergies are in full swing right now.
Okay, well, I um have been drawing out some ideas for the gardens. Right now, we just have container gardens. I've thought about approaching Andy, cause remember, he promised me a raised, one raised bed, but I don't know that I will. It would be nice to have one raised bed.
In the new, you're talking in the current.
At the current.
Was he gonna bring one from?
That, how much did it cost to build a raised bed? Twenty dollars in soil.
Can't we do it?
Well, the soil costs a little more, but I I think the, you know, you, so you buy some twelve-by-twelves and have them cut it. And it doesn't really cost that much, so I guess I could do it out of my budget, mine, you know. I hesitate to spend any money right now. But I could build a raised bed and get some soil delivered. And I was happy to hear that um somebody came and raked leaves. That's really great.
The primrose and crocus are coming up.
And that was really nice and so I do eyeball the um site once in a while to see what's going on over there. Especially the um. Our special tree, which I've forgotten the name of it right now, the.
Uh dogwood. The ro- um mountain laurel.
See how it's doing. But basically, that's it on landscaping.
Do you want, when do you, do you wanna do spring flowers? Cause we have winter evergreens by the door. I did have them take the wreaths down.
It's not quite, quite, quite. I would say April. April, some spring flowers if that's okay. It's still a little soon and we've had some mild weather, but we, it could turn on us. And so I'm not that that eager to plant anything at the moment.
And it's also very windy and things are being whipped around, trees coming down.
But, yeah, so I am getting excited about that.
Nice. Do you have a crew or do you have some people you can tap?
Not really. I haven't seen Linda Casey in a while. She was always a good helper. But I am friends with a lot of people that like to garden, so maybe I'll get them.
The um the wonderful book that you put together, um we can use some of the stuff that's in it to get a lead point for our lead certification. Because there's a point for community um food, feeding the community. And because we grow stuff and leave it out for patrons and give it to the Food Bank and do educational programming, it'll get us a point. So thank you for all the work you did putting it together.
Well, I have to finish it, finish it.
For what I need to to do the lead thing, like, there's enough in there. She said she, I said, I have a whole book. She said, two or three pages is all.
So what I need to finish in that book, um which is really, I haven't shared it with you guys yet, but. It it needs a um a forward, acknowledgements and um. Probably an outline.
Yeah, and I think if we're able to start a seed library.
Well, that's our next project. That's.
That that's part of the lead point, so yeah, we need to get moving on it.
Okay, well, I was actually going to talk to um Allison Bacoin.
Oh, great.
Is it Bacconi?
Uh Bacconi, Ally, yeah, Ally Bacconi.
Anyway, so those things are all in, I'm working on my review.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Okay, so on to membership. Um so we had uh, we had a trustee um resign. I think we mentioned this already, maybe before Beth Beth came in. But that uh will be an appointment um until the next election in twenty twenty-one. But I'll I'll find out from um the town clerk's office just to, just to make sure that we're correct on that. Um just someone, because her her term ended in twenty twenty-one, or what what ended in twenty twenty-one. Did I go way past that? Yes, I did. Uh any noise complaints or space issues?
Uh there's just not enough tables to accommodate everyone who wants to come sit and work. I can't fix that.
But there are, there are more tables than there were in the old.
No, we had, remember, we had um. Big rectangular one and two square ones and I think we were using them for staff surfaces, cause we couldn't take all the desks with us, cause they were built in counters. So yeah, so those big tables that we had for the public are being used for staff desks. So we have three um round antique tables, one laptop table and. Four tables in the children's room and two high tops for the teenagers, both of which have laptops on them, so they're not actually usable work surfaces. Yeah, that's just not a great space. And we have tutors and English language learners. I mean, it's it's great that it it's busy and in demand, but.
Okay.
It's challenging. And we we get asked for if there's public meeting rooms still every every two weeks or so. Yeah, and there's no public meeting room.
Soon.
Someday.
Okay, um on to the twenty twenty-one Long Range Planning Committee. I haven't had anyone reach out to me um if they wanted to serve on that committee. I'll be happy to serve on that that committee. It's, the next one is um March tenth, is that right?
Should make the new guy do it. So um long range planning is.
They'll learn a lot.
I don't even know where that is.
Do we, have we, so have we done an update on the last?
Yeah, we did, we did end of the year. Cause I, well, I submitted, no, I submitted an action plan, but I don't think I did an evaluation.
I did my due diligence.
Might be good if Marty feels like it. What are the dates again?
So Tuesday, March tenth, which is next Tuesday. And Tuesday, May.
Would you please um just uh mention to this board? What what it means to sit on this Long Range Planning Committee?
So um Long Range Planning is something that um we always do. It's a written document. That provides goals, measurable objectives and specific activities for the library. Um the plan gets written and turned into the Mass Board of Library Commissioners and it sets the direction that the library moves in. There are twenty-one or twenty-two roles, like official roles for public libraries um that we pick from. So the idea is we get a group of nine to fifteen, sixteen community members together who we think are stakeholders. Who have maybe had some historical perspective, who maybe visit lots of other libraries and see what other libraries are doing. Um who just have opinions or who are super patrons and are just at the library every week. Uh and we ask them what they, what what they like about Grafton, what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses, what are the needs? And then they think about that for a little while and then they come back and they identify these library roles and then try to slot community gaps. Into what they think the public library should be providing. And not everything fits, um and that's part of the process. Like, it would be great if we could. Bring, cause we have a parking issue, bus people from the school to the library. It's probably not something we can make work. So so it's it's those kinds of conversations. Who should we be serving? Who are we not serving? Why are we not getting people from South Grafton to come to North Grafton to come to the library? Uh and what can we do to change that and improve it? So it's it's two meetings. There, I scheduled three hours, but it's gonna be about two and a half hours. Um it'll be facilitated by another library director who's done lots of long-range planning and has guided other public libraries through the strategic planning process. Once we write it and turn it in, it goes to Mass Board of Library Commissioners and they require us to have a strategic or long-range plan. In their files to make us grant-eligible. And if you have a grant, you have to submit a long-range plan to keep your grant, because then you fall into ineligible status. So it's it's not required just for state aid, which is kinda, that has its own set of requirements, but it is required for MBLC, Mass Board of Library Commissioner grants. Um so our plan takes us through the end of December twenty twenty. Um but the long-range plan that that that's due next for twenty twenty-one to twenty-five is actually due in October twenty twenty. So we have to finish our plan for the next five years kind of before the the current one um expires. There's no penalty for not doing everything on the plan. It's really just a guiding document. But it helps us shape um what staff activities and what new projects we take on. We don't have infinite resources. So it it can be hard to say yes to to new exciting things that staff wanna do, so we always go back to the plan and library mission and figure out how it fits. Before we set our own goals that are part of the performance review process. Um so it's a really important document, but it's not, it's like, it's not new, it's not unusual. A lot of libraries do it. Um and it's something we've been doing, I think, for twenty-five or thirty years, probably since we had to, we applied for that first construction grant. Uh usually what happens is you also, you turn in that that five-year plan with a list of the activities you're gonna try to do in the first year. Everything, because of their goals, has a timeline to it or a completion date. Um so we have to also turn in an action plan and then I usually, I did not this year, turn into the board. Here's what we accomplished on the action plan, here's what, here's the action plan for the following year. So every year you're updating and deciding. We had this thing that sounded really great, we didn't get to it, are we gonna just change the date and move it up or are we just gonna let it go?
So Marty, um Beth describes it very well, but simplistically. Um last year, or last time we did this, there was a tween, a young, a person there. Who, she was at all the meetings and when she was asked what she would like to see. She explained that she is neither a child, so she doesn't use the children's library. Or and she's not a teenager, she doesn't wanna see all that junk that's in the books, you know, um kissing or whatever, you know. And that, she wanted her own tween space and she wanted bean bags and she wanted books that were appropriate to tweens. So that was a really good feedback for us. And then there were pa- patrons who said that they would like to um see us not minimize our holidays. By, we should use our holidays by the name they are and not try to accommodate everybody culturally. And that was interesting. And another point was that they wanted to see more plants. They want to see more greenery in the library. So and then there was more complicated things, but those are the simplest ideas. And those were all accommodated. The tweens will be in the in the new library.
We have it in our temp space.
And we have it in the temp space and so that's, and there were other more complicated things.
Let me just understand, is it the the role of the trustee representative to this committee? This is a committee of the library. Is that right? Well, the two thousand twenty Long Range Planning Committee is a committee of the library. So I'm not gonna be writing up a report of twenty thousand different items.
But you can come back and give feedback to the group or they can give you funnel suggestions.
My only reason for reluctance, quite honestly, is that I have two more meetings before I have to run for election. I have no idea whether I'm gonna be elected.
I think it would be good for, the reason why I suggested is you kinda get to know what, it's really, it's a great thing that we do. Because we're really asking for feedback from all people that do come to the library and people who don't come to the library. And we just find out really what people care about. Without it, we're lost. And it makes sense that they tie it to the eligibility of the grant, cause then people have to do it.
Well, Aaron, you had said you want, you wanted to do it or?
No, I I would unless um somebody else would would.
So what are the dates of these meetings?
Tuesday, the tenth of March, next Tuesday, next Tuesday, and the twelfth of May. And I forget, is the election, is that election day? So you're still a trustee.
Oh, thank you very much.
You will inform me of whatever stuff I should be informed of.
Yes, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, you'll be a representative um amongst a lot of other community representatives.
Understood.
Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh on to lighting in the parking lot after dark.
Can I ju- can I just say, if 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 you have other suggestions for people to invite, we are very close to deadline. I invited forty people. I have fif- with Marty, I now have fifteen yeses, but if there's somebody important who you think that I missed, I can send out the list after the meeting.
Could you please?
Yeah, um and I have a lot of people who just never got back.
I have a question to ask you offline.
But I think it's good to go.
Do you have any teams?
I have um one yes, one maybe, and one who hasn't responded.
Cause they do use the library a lot.
You you wouldn't have.
I I really only need one.
Yeah, you wouldn't have really, really young guys.
No, I have seventeen.
I'm sorry. When and where is the meeting? You gave me the date.
At the library. Fifty-three North Main Street. Six thirty. Next Tuesday and then two months from then. We'll send you a letter.
Um yes, please send. Um so the lighting in the parking lot after dark. So um I just wanted some clarification, Beth. Did you mean that the light isn't very good on the left side of the lot? Because that's what I had understood, because there's a light on the right side that's always been on. I took a photo, I sent it, sent it out to you guys.
I don't know if you know where Donna's room is? I don't know if you know where Donna's room is, but it's over by the children's room. That's dark.
I I don't.
Okay, so when you walk out the the door, if you take on the right hand side of the building.
If you're looking at the building, it's on the left.
So there's a, there's a little pathway, accessible space, the striping and then regular parking all the way down the hill. So it's that, it's the left.
So here's. You're looking from the street. Do you have that that photo?
Might be easier just to look at it.
Thought we had this resolved, then what happened?
Well, a light went out.
It needs to be rectified. We're all in, we're all in agreement, right?
I think you might have to pay for it. Sorry, everybody gets to read my work email.
Does the TV? Library lot for discussion, that uh is it that one? Yeah, so that one. Yeah, I also did it.
So there was one here that was perpetually on, including during the day. I had no switch. I thought it was just on a timer. But I have been asking for one at this corner because this is where the handicap parking is and a pathway to an emergency exit.
And anybody can stand back there. Anybody could stand back. I most likely not.
Anybody can stand anywhere.
No, but I'm just saying that, most likely not.
You mean someone could hide there?
So every time we had a discussion about lighting, I asked for that corner to be lit. And it's not been lit and I told the, like, we're, we've exhausted funding to, like, work on this building, cause it's not our building.
So there's no light there that's just not on, there's just no light at all back there.
Yeah, so so I I'm going back to discussions that I had last summer. Um you know, when Tim and I did a walk through and we said, yep, you know, light right there would be great and we identified it. So there's, there's no light there and I wanted to make sure that that's what you were talking about in that corner, so it is. Cause when I sh- when I was there last night, I noticed the other light was on, like, well, maybe that's what Beth means that, you know, the light burnt out. Because, because when I talked to um Sue, she said that that light has never been on. I don't think so.
This, this one.
That one has been on day and night, but it might not be on now.
But if that one's, if that one's on, does it light up enough of the handicap area?
No, but that was the only thing that we had for a long time until we got the um. The industrial light and then the, you know, the street light.
I like the industrial light, I'm sorry. I love that.
Yeah, so so perhaps um I did a C click fix, just that that light was out. Um and so hopefully um it really wasn't a a section, I said, street light out, that's that's all you could do a C click fix for, so that's what I did.
But it's unfortunate that the handicap person is probably the one that really needs light and it's the darkest spot.
Okay.
So are you saying we have to get a light and put it on the pole? Is that what you're saying?
If we want something else installed, uh we'll have to pay for it, an electrician to to put a light out on the right side there, uh left side.
And there's no light there now?
There's no light.
Do that, not unless you want that um industrial light back.
I don't think they'll bring the industrial light back. And we couldn't turn it on, like, it was a nightmare.
How much, how much is it gonna cost, or can someone look into?
I would say between probably six and twelve hundred dollars. Um based on the the other invoices that I saw, but I could ask Andy to reach out to him.
That's actually pretty reasonable. Uh go ahead.
I I agree, but just in terms of timing, how late is the library open?
Nine o'clock.
It'll be dark all summer too, yeah. It'll be dark in the summer.
By eight, yeah, it gets dark by eight, so, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You follow it up?
They are not quick, just a reminder.
We'll have lots of time.
You're gonna wait, no matter who it is.
Well, don't they have to, they have to check with the owner to see if they're gonna even let us put a light in? I'm sure they will, but. That's just gonna take time also.
Should we get that industrial light back? I mean, didn't that work?
Don't wanna go back to that.
You know, all that wood, wood in the back of the building that's all on the hill there, we could just pull that out and have bonfires every night.
Except when the wood is wet.
You looked kinda interested there, Beth.
We have to find out if we're.
Um so the the parking lot expansion update, I'd just like to s- to start with that um. The truck stop is is closing and the the scanning company um that's next door to truck stop is buying the building. So if um I know that they offered a couple of spots for the librarians to park and even even patrons? Just maybe three, three spot, okay.
Just two to four spots for staff. And we had to give them a list of cars and license plate numbers and cell phone numbers. And I was almost blocked in tonight, cause they had an event.
At the truck stop?
I maneuvered out, it was fine. They had, they have rides.
That's too bad, I'm sorry to see them go. They've been like in Grafton forever. Yeah, cause they were in South Grafton before that.
I I don't, I don't think they're thrilled to go either, but I think it's one of those things where um uh somebody wanted to buy the building.
Oh, okay, so they're not going out of business, they're just, they're getting forced out to move.
I don't think they're going, they don't have, they they gave up all their business to Landry's in in uh Westboro and in Worcester. So any, any warranties they're gonna honor?
There's, there's very little traffic in there, I mean.
No, I don't think so either.
So so along the the parking lot expen- expansion.
Yeah, I reached out to Tim and he actually responded this week that said, it essentially said they never got a hold of the owner. To do that, but the rumor was that there was a business that was gonna be purchasing that lot and he was gonna follow up with them. I I C C D on that. It wasn't really that promising either way, but sounded like.
But is that the same discussion that that you had?
No, well, yeah, we could, yes, we couldn't get a hold of the owner, but then it turned out that it was, the town assessor said that it was um owned by the bank at that point. And gonna be going up for auction. And I think now there is somebody who is interested in purchasing, purchasing, but I have no idea who it is.
It, yeah, Tim didn't mention who it was, of course, he's.
It's probably the people that, wouldn't it be the folks that are buying the other, the truck shop? It could be.
There's a private business interested in land and will al- and will allow the parking if acquired, we'll keep working on it.
They will?
That's what Tim said.
Someone should get it.
Well, that's great. That that's, that's really positive. They'll allow it if they acquire the business. That's fantastic.
But no timelines, no definitive answers at all.
So does that mean we might be able to put gravel down, like we did be, like Tim did before for us? And the whole world use it too?
He didn't.
We don't care, right?
It would be all speculation on my part. But if they're gonna let us use it, presumably we'd have to do something to make it usable.
Okay, great. Um so I don't know um how to get in touch with the. Scan scanning business, I'm sure I can just get a phone number, but I'm happy to give them a call and and ask if um, you know, we can continue to have um librarians park in the truck.
And what hours, what hours that business is open? Is it a nine to five type job, um business?
They were gonna use it for a warehouse, is what the truck stop person told me. So I don't even know if they need.
Yeah, they they may be willing to give that up. Yeah, it's a neat building. It was, it's a new, new construction, I've thought in the past ten years, right?
It's a nice building, yeah.
It's a very nice building.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, uh what next?
Uh walkabout.
Well, we failed.
About to say, we never did that, did we?
We failed. Um but if you would like to join me, do you do a um like a? Book club one evening?
Um, let's see, the book club night, I'm not gonna be able to do at the library this month, no.
Okay, well, then we'll have to ma- maybe on a Saturday? Okay.
And then it's the uh policy reviews.
Okay, excellent.
Inclement weather and internet use policies.
Okay, um did anyone have any um feedback to to give to um? Our policy um subcommittee of uh Daniela and and Beth. Uh about the inclement weather policy.
I didn't, I didn't really notice any major changes.
I think it was things that we talked about.
Yep.
Some clarification.
No, I mean, to me, it sounded clear.
And if it doesn't say director or his, or their designee. I think that I went through and fixed that.
Yep, I thought that was really good to talk about um, you know, how how the library is in line with different um. Te- town resources between, you know, school or municipal center.
Yeah, so I I push back the time. Because we open at ten and I think I said I would make every effort before seven, but instead, we actually have a town policy that if the weather is bad. You're allowed to be late, so people who like need to dig out, they can come in by before ten. Um so I feel like I don't need to rush to. Tell them, cause I have actually plenty of time. And then I'm not, you know, getting pinged at five thirty and six by people. And three P M is about two hours, so that's two hours before opening shift and two hours before evening shift change. And really, I I should be checking in with the plow people to make sure it's done and ask for a photo. But one thing that happens is even even if they've plowed, because the lot is uneven, they're not at, able to scrape everything up and it's still really slippery. And I don't know it until I show up and.
That's a tough road way, cause it doesn't need much to be really slippery.
Do we have a a plan for for weekends? I know you mentioned a little bit. So with a private company, uh or is it?
No, it's still town. But like, nobody's gonna come over and shovel unless, I mean, I can try and arrange it in advance and sometimes I can get somebody. But they're not under my jurisdiction, so it's really kind of uncomfortable.
Did, and the C click fix is probably not.
Yeah, so we had that storm when the town offices were closed.
Right, cause everyone have the day off.
And we were open, so it was like, I was trying to call the DPW, I was using C click fix, but in the end, like um, you know, we had to rouse. Um you know, the town administrator on on his day off.
And and an employee who thought he had the day off who had to come over and shovel. Maybe should have just closed. But I just, I feel like I shouldn't close, so.
It is a lot of pressure, I mean.
It is.
It is pressure. Well, was there any?
Especially with the prediction.
It's not gonna snow anymore, it's okay.
Were people upset because of that, the way we handled it? Cause they had to come to work?
Um, I don't think. I think staff understood, I mean, I think I was able to work it and that they could have an alternative day off. So it, so that part was okay. I think the frustration was like, we showed up and it still was not safe for anybody to be there and and. Like, we all waited at truck stop and they came and they did plow, but then no one waited for the sander, they all just went, we all just went and parked and. So, yeah, that was like just poor.
Yeah, and the feedback.
They really wanna get to work, it's great. When I say you have to be there, they show up. And then somebody slipped and fell.
Somebody slipped and fell?
Yeah, because we didn't have somebody to shovel.
Was it?
An employee fell. Yeah, cause she, they left their car at truck stop and walked over, cause the plow hadn't come and so. Didn't follow protocol, went to work on time, which is great, great work ethic, but then they had left their car, cause our lot wasn't plowed, walked over. And then when they went to retrieve their car after our lot was plowed, slipped on the hill. And they just waited until, you know, followed that, you don't have to be here at eight thirty if we have an inclement weather situation, you can wait and take your time or wait to hear from me.
Any long term?
I'm nobody's mother, I can't. You know, I'm trying to keep them safe. She was fine.
However, that could have happened just even if she had waited.
I I almost fell going back to my car to get something. So we filled out all the right paperwork, she's fine.
Well, we know you feel a lot of pressure, are you happy with the way the? Policies written for you?
I I still would appreciate, I think, more, hey Beth, I looked at the weather. Um or I drove by and it's on my way to work at seven thirty and it's awful and you need to delay till eleven. Like, I would appre- I would appreciate, not that I wanna be micromanaged, but I would really appreciate that directive from the board, because then I feel like I have really strong support that I'm making the right call. And not just being wimpy myself. Plus, I'm an hour away and if you're here and driving by and noticing.
When I drive by in the morning, I'll call, I call you.
Yeah, so so the the feedback we were getting that that particular day was that the lot looked, looked good and the rest of the roads were clear. And um it it was not the case. The roads were clear, but the lot was not well taken care of. So, you know, we we went with the best information that we could. And I was in Boston, but I had driven by there and I saw it and we took the others. Uh the town administrator's office at their work.
I unfortunately, I just don't drive by. Most days, I'm not driving by that building, unless I'm going, unless I'm going to the library.
Okay, so um do I have a motion to accept the inclement weather policy and procedures policy?
I move that we accept the inclement weather policy and procedures.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Thanks for all the work that the team, the group did on editing that.
So um I don't know where my copy of of this went, but did everybody get the opportunity to look at it?
I did not.
Is that the internet one?
Were there significant changes over the last one?
Well, um she she's bolded a few of them. And a lot of it kinda goes in line with what we discussed earlier about um passenger protecting. And ha- and having a sign up sheet uh in the teen and and children's.
I I thought it was a really good policy.
It ta- it was a good policy to start with, it's just we we had, we added teen computers and the policy does not address teen computer use. Or that that we expect adults to not be in that space.
Right, that makes it clear.
Well, it's not just using the computers, they shouldn't be in that space.
They shouldn't be in that space, period.
But we don't have any policy that says that at present. Related to computer.
So so this here, uh A, um when I first read it, I had to reread it again because it, you know, I almost thought that. It meant I needed to sign in when I'm using the wifi.
Well, you don't have, yeah.
Like, I have to sa- sign in for the, you know, the the sign up sheet, if I'm connecting though. So this first sign by by last name. Circulation desk prior to using a library computer, signing in to use a computer or logging onto the library's wifi constitutes agreement.
So either by signing or logging.
One or the other.
Pretty much constitutes agreement with this internet use policy. Either, either way, either one, but I know, I know what you mean, yeah. Go slow when you read that one, yeah. I know what you mean, now.
So so that adds the the procedure for wireless, the procedure for library computers and then explains that either. Signing into either one means that you are in agreement with our current internet use policy. Which actually pops up on the screen when you're sitting down at either of those computers. So you have to click through it to get to the internet.
Yeah, so does in that.
So that, so that'll have to be updated.
In that part, that policy's uh written next to the sign in sheet.
It's um it's posted on the wall above the sign in sheet and then uh in the computer areas for teens and kids. It's posted and we highlighted the part about youth having preference priority.
Now, I just have a question about the thirty minutes, so are you at the point where you're telling people to leave after thirty minutes or is there enough?
Daniela had a question about that too. So I added, yeah, so you you get thirty minutes, if no one's waiting, you can stay on. We're not gonna kick you off, so you can continue to remain, but because we make people sign in, adults anyway. The way they sign themselves in and write the time, so now I can go up, so six computers are full, seventh person comes in, I go to the log. And I look at who's been on the longest, who didn't sign out. And it could be that people walked away and didn't sign out, so now I have to go through, what's your name? What's your name and figure out who's been on the longest and, okay, you have five minutes to finish up. You've been on for more than your sixty minutes and now I have somebody waiting, so you're the first person that we're gonna boot. Does it come to that?
It does occasionally.
Once in a while. Yeah, we have more of an issue in the um other building because we have groups of teenagers coming in at night, which, that was, it was great that they were there. But then we had no computers available to use, so then we would have, have to have turnover. And keep them to the limit, right. And the limit can be done, again, if, once we go to software, the software will give a five minute warning and then.
The software will take care of it.
You have to see a staff member to get your time extended. You have to see a staff member to get your time extended.
Right.
And if someone's waiting, we don't extend it. And you may even be blocked from signing in a second time, staff might need to override it. But we're gonna we're
I wouldn't like that.
We're so in the new building, we'll have four sit down workstations for adults, three for teens and tweens and two for youth. And then ten laptops for each of those age groups additionally, so we're gonna have plenty of machines to use.
That's a lot.
It is a lot, well eh eventually, so we might start with only six.
Okay, good.
But yeah, six for tweens and teens or ten, ten for kids, ten for adults and then ten that we can reserve for staff to do programming with. But they'll all be connected to the sign up system, you check out a laptop, you log in, your your timeline will start.
Oh nice.
Yeah. And if I have my way, at least two of those groups of computers, laptops, will be in a charging unit, so you'll you don't actually need to see a staff member, you'll scan your card. Take it out of the charging locker, sit down anywhere in the building, have it print to central printing. Pay with your card or or pay from um your phone, looking at print by uh print by phone apps.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so more self-service, again, we're not gonna get all the stuff we need, so the more we can do for self-service and electronic, you know.
I think there's more discussion here, um but very interesting.
And Hudson does that.
Yeah.
And they actually, I think they do twenty minutes.
Wow.
Wow.
I it could, it could be mistaken, but I think it is twenty minutes.
We put one of our machines on a podium so that you can stand at it and put like a, this is the express workstation. So that if people to have something to do quickly and and because most people who have lengthy things to do wanna sit, that computer's available a lot.
They use a lot for researching their own stuff.
Yeah, or OPAC people, I see them go, yeah, go go to it for an OPAC. Catalog.
Any other um things to note, point out?
Yeah, I took out this because they um they used to be in the space and now we have a separate program room, so we don't need to hold to that anymore. Um I think I just reworded that a little bit.
Are you looking for us to approve this tonight or is this just the kind of the final copy for us to review for next month?
I need approval, then if you want to give me more time, I think I need to know that.
Yeah, I I'm ready to approve it tonight.
Okay.
Um, what do you think Doug?
Sure, I haven't read the whole thing, so.
Well, I mean it's the same, it's the same policy.
Things in bold.
Just the bold, okay. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so um alright, so I make a motion to approve the internet use policy as amended.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I I will say this this M is only in bold because it was part of the previous sentence, like that's not new, I just hit return, so it changed, so. It's actually not one changes.
Yep.
Okay.
I I thought it was very very well written, yeah, nice job.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, um.
Right, uh we did define phrase, then everything else is the director's report.
Yes, and you have uh yeah, direct director's report.
The library's stats.
Eileen um has been out sick, so I don't I don't have bills cuz she does the bills.
Yeah.
You didn't send, did you send this?
I did not, no, I I have been honestly.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it.
Well, this is the hi- this is the highlight of the meeting.
Tim Tim sent a survey uh about um that I all these town managers are sending to their directors asking if they have an assistant director. And what that person does and who's the delegate when the director's out. No, but we need one.
Do you have Beth, Beth Patch, is she?
Well, not until
Yeah, not yet.
Not yet, I mean she has me.
We don't work the same shift, so it's hard to
Well, I will be when I retire, when I retire.
Yeah.
Oh.
I can't wait.
For the state.
And then if you're not at your at a at a circulation desk.
No, she'll be in the admin office.
I'll be in the admin.
Goodie.
Good.
Yes, I can't wait.
Then I think you'll
But I've learned, I will say that I have learned a tremendous amount. And could always be a good backup.
Yes, and she's really good with the patrons.
Even when I'm
Even when you're grumpy.
Even when I wanna
Even when they're not.
Even when they're not.
Um so in January, I worked on the annual report for Tana Grafton and these are the, they turned it into an infographic. Um so that's been out publicly and we don't often get comments through our website, which has a blog function. Right, so everything that you see on the front page is actually a blog post. Uh we had two two comments on along the annual report that wow, numbers are great and I think another one was, I didn't know what you guys did all day and now I know. So seeing the information in this format instead of just a six pages of text in a May But it takes time, you know, to do that, I used Vengage to do this.
Yep.
Um I wrote my annual construction report, I worked a lot on long range planning, starting to collect names and draft the letter and and work with the consultant to figure out what she was gonna do. Um library construction, I have a minimum of two, probably two meetings a week about library construction, lots of emails back and forth about the construction project, um plus the monthly um building committee meeting. I know it looks weird. Um collection development, um I started um reading by Dewey numbers, I actually like set up a plan, which I sort of did it as I was doing some nonfiction tagging, I'm the nonfiction purchaser. Um which is one of my favorite parts of my job. And I really don't wanna give it up, but it does take some time. Um so always, you know, trying to buy, make sure that we have bestsellers and what people ask for, we implemented a suggestion box, so managing the suggestion box and pulling comments and requests out of there, although I gave Siz in the key and and passed that on. Um we had notification that um passport fees were gonna increase, uh we have four staff and myself trained in how to review passports so that we are a passport acceptance facility. Any new passport uh and every child passport, cuz they can't renew, is a new passport, you make thirty five dollars for every new and child passport. Uh and that goes into the library's gift fund and I'm the the steward basically of the passport service that we offer at the library. Um so I'm the one who had to make sure everybody knew that the fee was changing for one piece of mail, you know, when we send it out for, I think expedited. So that took, like you wouldn't think that these things would take a lot of time, but it did, we had to change all of our signage and make sure everybody knew and update all of our files. Um yearbook digitization, we had um scanned thirty or thirty five Grafton High School yearbooks about five years ago. And for the and then when the current class, three years ago um the the principal and I think a teacher and and the librarian all called me and said, we have this person who does not wanna be online, like there's some issue. She we just cannot have her picture online, don't scan this yearbook. Said, okay, so we didn't, and then that sort of halted the project. Um but the principal, Jim Fingataro, really loves that the yearbooks are online and wants to impl- wanted to implement it back again, so it it took some time to kind of find that person and see if it was okay and and finally decided no response and her very public social media profile meant she wasn't in hiding anymore. Um and we could proceed without taking out pages or blacking it out, so I was able to package up yearbooks, get some, the ones that we didn't have from high school uh and send them all off to be digitized through the um digital Commonwealth Project, so I pay three hundred dollars a year to be a member, they have an annual conference. Um and because we pay three hundred dollars a year, we get our yearbooks digitized for free.
Oh my gosh, that is fantastic.
So worth it.
And so what does that mean, is it just the
They scan, they scan, yeah, they scan into PDF page by page, it's not uh it's not really searchable. So you have to know so and so was in this year's class and then look through the pages.
Well, you can go look at the
But you could.
Twenty eighteen yearbook.
The whole thing is there.
Where do you see this online?
So it's on in the internet archive, archive dot org, uh and we have a link, so when you go to I can pull up the website if you want, you go to our webpage, you click resources, all digital resources and G H S yearbooks is right there and it lists the run
That's great.
That we have.
No idea, I love it that you did that.
Yeah.
Is it gonna have all all the signatures and comments and stuff?
They're not, they're not people's personal yearbooks, right, so it's it's the li- the copy that the library purchased, so they could have, some, I didn't look closely, there could be pages with mustaches. Or you're, somebody's crush got cut out, hopefully not, but the but the idea is if we can get it when it's new cuz we we have these copies that are reference only copies, get it scanned right away and then put it in the collection, if it gets defaced, lost or stolen, we have this digital copy in perpetuity.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd love to do the same thing with newspapers and I do have a a proposal someday when I have free time, uh fifteen thousand dollars to digitize all of our um Grafton News. They scan it to microfilm first and then they put it online and it's searchable and it's a great project, but that's not covered with digital Commonwealth. There are grants available, they recommend, one of businesses for the money. Um because we have no marketing and P R person anymore, that's something that I've taken on some of, I'm trying to get staff to write their own press releases and send them to me if they want them to go to the papers. Um Allison's doing an amazing job with social media, um so I think between the two of us, we're getting some good coverage for our events. And I did find, I think maybe beginning of February, um maybe it was even last week, this so maybe not a January thing, but the policies that you do approve in January. Make sure those were all, had all the changes that we asked for and posted them on our policy page on the internet, I also updated the trustee information.
Thank you.
From a while back, so all the terms um should be up to date, and then there's tons of staff management, so this is what I do. All day, lots of meetings, sometimes training.
So can you go back, uh do the days open, how does that compare to an average year, cuz we were closed because of the move?
Yeah, so we're we're down yeah three weeks compared to an average year, but that's it.
You didn't send this to us yet, did you?
Yeah, I think I actually shared it in January.
This this one, cuz I can't really see it that well.
Yeah, that's small. I can send it out, it's hanging outside of my office.
Yeah, do you mind sending it to us?
Not at all.
Thank you.
And and the
I would say everything, everything is down.
Well, that and that's what I was getting at is we were closed for
Everything is, not only we were closed, but we have no parking.
Right.
Like we um so I I I'm hearing feedback that patrons wanna come to after school programming. And I would like to offer more than just story time and and I want us to have after school programming, so we scheduled things at four, we scheduled things at four thirty. Um staff came up with wonderful creative ideas, um a a math program, I forget what the name of it is, but it was supposed to start this Tuesday. The person who was gonna run it was sick, I said go home, I will do your program. It was a ten Z, a dice game, um and more, so counting games with dice and cards, not gambling. Um but but math skill building games.
Yeah.
One child and parent came into the library from quarter of four until quarter of five. And he was eight, he was the appropriate age for the program, I said, oh, would you like to come and play and he sort of went, no, weird library lady. He said, well, you take a calendar, we're offering this every Tuesday, it's a different math thing to build skill ev- and and have fun every week, it's a new thing we're trying. And he said, thank you and walked out, but I couldn't, there wasn't even children in the room to to funnel into this, it's first time new program. We are just not seeing um an audience, we had seventy, I think seventy three thousand visitors in twenty eighteen and we had fifty five thousand in twenty nineteen. And it's not cuz we're not doing a good job.
Right.
You know, we're not offering what people want.
People from the center, some of them are going to other libraries.
Which is fine, that's great, the those other libraries will get a bump in their state aid next year, so we may get a little less because we're not serving as many people. It'll all change in a year and a half.
And the problem too is the lo- is probably the location.
Location's not great, yeah, but do you think any additional marketing or P R or public
You can always do more, no matter how much we do, people say, oh, you did that, you did that, I didn't know you were doing that.
Yeah.
So it's just such information overload.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did get um information about the community readout, a little late, it came out at mid to end of February. Um Heidi just dressing up as a suffragette is drawing huge, you know, it's it's publicity and marketing in and of it, so so. Um and yeah, the Face- Facebook and Instagram, people see it and people sign up and sometimes they don't show up and then we have programs where we're turning people away, so.
Yeah.
I wonder if I've ever seen Heidi in plain clothes.
I have once.
Once, I think.
Seven years, I think.
Really?
Yeah.
I was about to say, I don't know if I ever have.
You say Heidi, you look fantastic, she goes, thanks, no, thank you, people come to the library just to see what Heidi has on and there's comments every month.
Yeah.
Which I try to share more general things and not personal compliments to staff.
Yes.
There's always two or three outfits.
Nice.
Yeah, and Beth takes pictures and puts them on.
Oh yeah.
They should go on the library's Facebook.
I know, I will.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Uh and then here's our January stats, um so I just did comparison to last month, the um the circulation graph, there there's a new category for twenty twenty, but it's very low cuz we're only in, yeah, the first month of the year here. Uh but you'll notice that um print and and physical materials continue to decline very slightly, I think it went down four percent last year. While digital uh increases, so digital was up, I forget if it was twenty two percent, it was up a lot last year. So there, at some point, maybe they'll cross, but in the meantime, we're trying to purchase bestsellers i- in regular print, large print, physical audio ebook, um and digital audio as we can. So uh visitors was, I think, up slightly from December, reference was down one question. Cardholders was down, um programs I think actually went up, that should be seventy six, not forty five. Um passports was up, we're doing a ton of passports. Just, yeah.
Seems a lot, yeah.
Yep, um computer use I mentioned down and and why I thought it was down. Um museum pro- museum pass was down a little bit, um and new items, it it's it hovers around six that six hundred every month or so. Um somebody who need their passport training, I went to a focus group for the Mass Public Library Construction Program Grant. Um they're thinking of doing it a little bit differently, right now, every applicant gets thrown into a big pool and they're thinking instead of doing every five years open to everybody, they might funnel into small libraries, medium libraries and large libraries. And they're also still really fighting to get more money every year to the library so that the construction waitlist isn't very long. So it was at the um Bolton Library, um in a really interesting session. So our Harry Potter event, Care of Magical Creatures, the children's room sponsored a stuffed animal sleepover and the pictures are on Facebook and they're just charming.
They are.
They're having a picnic after hours in this photo. Um and then another component of the the winter pre- reading reading program, Reading is Magic is the house cup. So where in the books, the characters get awarded house points for good deeds and they get house points taken away for naughty things or bad things that they do. We are having people um earn their points with money. So copper pennies and green dollar bills add points to your house while silver detracts from other houses and poor Slytherin has no love. Because they came out in the negative and all of this this
Aren't you a Slytherin?
Me?
Yes.
I am a ra- actually, I'm a Gryffindor, but I selected Ravenclaw cuz I'd rather be a Raven. I self-selected. My my party line to anybody who says, no, I'm a Gryffindor is, you would do well in Slytherin, because that's what the sorting hat tells Harry.
Yeah, that's what the sorting
However, Slytherin is getting a lot of coin and I put a lot of coin in it, however.
Who are you, fight against Jan, right?
However, um that means she's making money for for a cause anyway.
Absolutely, so the money's going to the capital campaign. Yeah. And and it's really, cuz people from the same the same family will be in different houses, so there's a lot of pivots and back and forth.
Good.
Where the money's
It's a lot of fun, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um the they had did a uh crystal ball, so so the idea is you you earn these ten badges, right, based on real classes at real classes, at Hogwarts, um and there was a divination class in the book, so they have a crystal ball making workshop and they filled every slot with only one no show. So they just kept turn- kept every hour, there was like another program on how to make it and you just churned out um lots of people. Um. Yeah.
How do you make it?
I I did not attempt.
Oh, I did.
What was it? It was a glass ball.
Right, so it was like an ornament, a glass Christmas ornament, so you could just, you know, take the top out and you could paint it, put stuff in it or anything like that, then there was a circular piece of wood with a hole in it. So then you take the ornament and put it upside down and it looks like a crystal ball.
And it sits on like a little pedestal.
Yep, yep. So then it looks like a crystal ball, but it's a glass ornament.
They're very clever.
Yes, it was.
It's, it's been, yeah, really, really popular. Um, teens had their regular Dungeons and Dragons, uh, event. Uh, Allison started a new book group, it's called Check It Out. And the idea is just, you know, bring things that you wanna talk about it. We're not all reading the same book, just come and talk about what you are reading. Uh, but no takers yet, unfortunately. Um, ad- for adult programming, we do lots of book groups. We also do some outreach. Um, we have a ukulele group that meets in partnership with Apple Tree Arts because we circulate ukuleles. And we sponsored a ukulele one-on-one class. I think we've done it four times. And then the people who, we don't have ukulele two-on-one. Instead, we have a jam band and, uh, Beth and I usually go on one Thursday a month. Um, and sometimes we have three people and sometimes we have sixteen people. And last month, since in February that we had like a grandmother and her grandchild and two new people, Dana came and took pictures. Um, it's a lot of fun. Susan brings the, uh, her book wagon out to Crescent Manor. Um, we have a shut-in program as well. We have volunteers who are volunteer delivery drivers on a weekly basis for, uh, some families. Um, but she gets to talk to people in the nursing home and she ta- gets reference questions and does renewals and hold requests and refreshes their material. Um, we have a lot of volunteers. Uh, I think we had fifty-five unique volunteers for the, the calendar year. Um, they donated thirteen hundred hours or so. Um, so this month alone, we had twenty-nine, we're getting tax write-off volunteers. Um, and I'm about to get an intern in April from the high school through a program that they're doing. So, yeah.
That's awesome.
He's just gonna shadow me. I said, do you wanna go to a construction meeting? He's like, yeah. Am I gonna trust you, me? Yeah. Okay, do you wanna digitize some documents? He, he just said yes to everything. So, okay, you're hired. So we'll have more hours this spring, um, from him.
Do you think he's on a track for, for library?
Doesn't, no. He just thought that he's a reader and he just thought it might be interesting.
That's great.
It's very flattering.
So does he have a project he needs to do?
Um, the project is to do an internship. It's, he has to be at the library supervised twenty-five hours a week for six weeks. Yeah, so.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I know.
Are you giving him stuff to do?
Oh, I have plenty of things he can do. Yeah, so I'm gonna make him send it past the desk and just.
A lot of people send it by desk.
But I also like, if, if he wants to, um. If he wants to do a pro- like he could dress up as a character, right? And, and do a photo op for kids. He could do it like his own programming. He could say that he's hosting a tea, we'll get the materials, he can go host a tea with the seniors and, and talk about what they're reading. So part of it is, that would take place at the end of the six weeks. So he's gotta, so he's gotta learn planning and budgeting and like all kinds of things. And my goal really is, does, not so much how a library works, but how does a nonprofit function? How's town government function? And then that will serve him well. He doesn't have to go into libraries, you know, to get something out of that experience. I did tell him he could look at the CD collection and tell us what to buy besides the Grammy winners. Like that's what we need the team pulse on, you know, he can put up book displays, there's lots of things. I think that would be helpful that he could do. He could be on the long range planning committee. So maybe he'll, he'll show up for that. Um, it was six hundred items, not six hundred and five, uh, for January. So we're still using Wow Brary. There was a, a patron comment this, for this month, that we needed to get more business books. So again, one thing that's really helpful with this email that anybody can sign up for is it tells how many books in, in a category that we purchased. So look, we, we did buy four business books in January, so we're responsive.
He was my patron.
Patron feedback, yeah.
He had a big list.
Where is it?
Well, I, I pu- I found all the ones he needed and the ones we couldn't find, which were some, uh. Surprising, some of them were surprising. Um, I listed them.
Uh, yeah, so there, yeah, there it is. We should enhance GPL and C of D, but I don't have control over CW Mars business. Like that's all of the libraries. Um, can we move the parenting collection to the children's room? We haven't done it yet, but we could probably find a space. We did start labeling, um, some of the parenting books with a little parenting sticker. The, they're not all in one spot under the Dewey Decimal System, right? Some might be in three hundreds under parenting, some might be under three, a different three hundred number under schooling. Some might be in the six hundreds under development. Um, but we could pull them out and put it, put a collection in the children's room, like above the board books at parent height. So it's a good request.
It's like cross merchandising.
Yeah, and you can find more in.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, and I, I think that our intent is in the new building that the parenting collection will come out of adult, nonfiction and go in the children's.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, near the, um, program room. Um, no, I couldn't find a picture for this last thing. So, uh, book donations, we're still not taking book donations. We cannot manage any book donations, uh, until we're in the new space where we have storage space. Um, we had a complaint about. Two, two about parking. Um, I still have to get a no parking sign for that sort of horseshoe, horseshoe shape. There's no parking printed on the ground, but we need a, a stand-up sign.
Like for the circle around?
Yeah, for the circle.
Someone tries to park there?
All the time.
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, and, and so, somebody wanted us.
Parking, you just leave your car there.
Somebody wanted us to put a no parking sign in front of the section of the handicapped spa- parking space where we've striped. So they didn't understand that the stripe meant don't park here and they want an additional sign on the striping. Like, like when you pull in, you see a no parking sign. And Heidi said, no, it's it, the no parking is the striping. Um, so we take out the puppets.
Well, I think they're desperate for space.
I can see people not understanding that.
I think, right, or else if the ground is really covered. You don't know. You may not see it.
Uh, yeah, well, that, that.
If the blacktop is covered.
When I went to the library tonight, there were people parked right there in the circle. And I have seen a patron try to park between the handicap spot by the building. So here's that person parked in the handicap spot, trying to park right there on the grass between the building and the handicap spot.
Aren't there shrubs there or something?
Yeah, well, they were trying.
Against the building. They were what?
They were trying. So, so I, I understand how difficult it is to park in that lot because somebody was parked in like at an angle. They just don't park straight and I, I had to park next to them, so there was somebody in the car idling. So I said, you know what, when these people leave, they may hit my car. So I took a photo and, you know, cause if they hit my car, my car got hit recently in, in Boston. So like I'm hypersensitive to that and I made me so nervous just having that person like parked that way. So I understand how difficult it is to get in and out of there.
I, I doubt we can't remove that. I know it's not ours.
So, so we had, we had a complaint in February. Um, from somebody who had not been to the new building yet, who is handicapped, who parked. So, so there's a spot by the building and then there's a striping and then there's a regular spot. But when it was the church, that regular spot was handicapped. So there were two accessible spots. And then the rest of it was regular parking. But when they restripped it, they put handicapped, striping and then put a handicap spot. Across the parking lot. It's on a slope, so we had a complaint that that was not up to code. And we're sort of grandfathered in, but then we changed the striping. So I directed him to the building to park and then he, and I'm still waiting to hear. It would not be hard to move the sign and to. Paint over and then repaint a wheelch- the, the icon. But I need direct, again, it's money. And I need direction from somebody else to.
It would make sense. It's time.
Um, yes, log, sure, we can buy that video game you want. Yes, you can pay your library fine with a credit card, but you have to do it online through CW Mars. And yes, we have bus schedules that we can give out for you. Um, the friends, we mentioned their fundraiser already, they did also, uh, uh, we're gonna hit, send on, on their newsletter in just a little bit. Um, they voted to extend their T-shirt sales, cause they only sold five shirts. They sent out the publicity for both of their February fundraisers halfway through the month. So they didn't, they were great ideas, but they did not get the momentum that we were hoping for. Because one of them was make a Valentine's Day heart. And it was advertised like the thirteenth.
The next day.
And then people weren't as interested in enjoying their library love. But it was, the materials aren't gonna go bad, they will do it again. And then the other thing was the summer reading shirt fundraiser, but again, that, the word didn't get out. I kept asking for clothespins to hang up some shirts to display. Got them. So we're gonna try and extend it and see if people buy them. So, yeah, if you want a summer reading shirt, I don't know if they'll be in in time for the egg hunt, but the choices are Puss in Boots, a dragon. Or a stack of books with a Sherlock, uh, sort of Robin Hood.
It's a red shirt.
Robin Hood.
The adult one.
Yeah, it's a really nice red too. It doesn't show up really, uh, on a slide. It's a bright red. Um, and they're available in ladies cuts, kid cut. Go on the website, friendsGPL.org. You can buy a shirt, ten dollars for kids and fifteen for adults and we should all have matching shirts.
So would the librarians have summer reading shirts, um, like those?
Yeah, so the, it's their uniform for the summer, it really is. So the friends give us ten thousand dollars a year, about eight thousand of that goes to museum passes. And then the other two thousand is for programming, um, it helps pay for like our water cooler. Um, and it goes towards summer reading program prizes and for the staff T-shirts. It's about two hundred bucks for the T-shirts. So the library buys, um, a shirt for every staff member. And then that's used to promote.
And so this is our, uh, the community's opportunity to say, wow, what a cool shirt.
Yes, because they, they have been, like we have a lot of feedback that they really love the shirts. This year it's a fairy tale theme, the shirts are fun, they are cotton, a hundred percent cotton, they're high quality. So here's your o- opportunity this year. They asked, so we did it. Buy a shirt.
Okay, thank you. Well, we are, um, passing the clock. Um, oh, did you have a new hire?
Oh, yeah, well, you better, I mean.
Alright.
Yeah.
She came here last week, the last night.
So, um, Lee McCullough, who I'm sure you all remember fondly, is back in the area and interested in temping. And since Ms. Beth wants to go to B school. Um, Lee is gonna fill in those Thursday night hours. So you'll see her smiling face at the library. Yep, and we are, um, probably gonna add four or five more temps because, um. Like we, we actually, we have three people tonight at the library. I had two people call out sick, none of the temps were available. So we're short. Um, and I think if we add some more people to the roster. That is less likely to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
And make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, wait, there's discussion.
Maybe, sorry, I know you all wanna go home. Do we have any concerns with, um, COVID nineteen that anybody would like to raise or address? Are you interested in what we're doing at the library?
With what did you say?
COVID.
COVID nineteen.
Um, I'll, I'll start off. Um, what a lot of the clients that, that I work with are doing are coming up with a contingency plan. For continuing business but doing it remotely from home. I know you can't really do that, um. Not as an organization, and you, and, I mean, it has to be staffed. So we're probably looking at, if it's a state of emergency, then an extended close. Uh, and I don't know what, you know, perhaps we can take it offline to figure out. What that might mean for staff salaries and that, I don't know if that's something the trustees should be involved in or the town, but.
Well, you guys are the ones with the power to close the library, per Tim. Um, I, we could say, we could have a pandemic policy. We don't have one. Uh, we do have a minimum staffing policy, which I would like to send out and review, but it basically, it doesn't say it's because of illness. It's just if we don't have enough people, technically tonight, we should be closing the children's room, I think. And then having eh, three people in the main desk and not just one by herself. They might have, yeah. So it's that kinda thing, like how many people do we need to be down before we decide, no, we have to close?
Are there any, are there any, um, communications from the State Library Association about? Any specific with libraries?
Yeah, the state forwarded the, um, CDC fact sheet today. Um, the town has been sending out stuff from the state and from CDC. Um, Tim decided that he wanted hand sanitizers at every entrance in this building, like the stand ones that you have to walk into. And I said, well, we're gonna add some wall mount ones, but if you're ordering, just get, will you get two, bill us? So we'll have one as you go into the adult room by the door and one in the children's space. We hung up hand washing signs.
Do you know the maker?
I, I'm not, Bob Burger's ordering them, I'm very happy.
Somebody told me the ones that are the, in the hospital are the best, are the only ones that really work.
I have no idea.
That's what it is, pure.
I did ask if they were automatic and I didn't get an answer.
That's the best.
So I just need to say that hand washing is the best.
Yes, it is.
Period. CDC says that, the WHO says that, everybody says, hand wash. Warm water, twenty seconds, wash your hands well with soap and water. We also ordered gloves because, um, in the event, um, that it did get to be a big deal. Everybody, people are touching things.
Yeah.
So even though it's respiratory, you also, pe- it's touch and then you touch your face. So people need to practice not touching their face. Hand wash, hand wash, hand wash, wear gloves. I do agree about the masks that they really, unless you're wearing something really potent, it's not helping.
Yeah, so staffer prepared to, to wear gloves and sanitize every item that comes back.
And you know, Lee McCullough's coming back, so she, I said, let her clean away.
She suggested we cancel storytime. And I'm inclined to wait until we have an actual local case or schools close to do that. We also have, um, staff and custodial on board with like wiping things down. And we've offered wipes for everyone who signs up for the internet computers, like wipe your station down before you start and wipe it again afterward. Here's, here's the tools to do that.
So that's just the process that people should be doing all the time. It's flu season.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay.
Yep.